Okay, we'll call the workshop to order. We have a roll call, please.
Farmer?
Here.
Henning?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Bachman?
Here.
And Stevens?
Here. Okay, um, who's, who's up? Kevin?
Evening. Um, a lot of stuff you're going to see, you've seen before. Unfortunately, not much has changed. I didn't plan that. Hang on, here it goes. You would know that, I wouldn't, yeah. So, just trying to recap, um, for property taxes, going back, looking at our, our tax collections from 2017 through last year, you can kind of see we're stuck around 2.3, 2.4, um, because all of our levies are capped out. Uh, we're, they're using reduction factors to bring us back down to the max we can collect on those levies. So, um, you're not going to see any increases in, in that. You'll see some if new construction, but, um, not, not a whole lot that's going to be significant. Then looking at the, the transfers is, you know, what, what the biggest thing is we have right now, the transfers from the general fund, going again from 2017 to 2023, you can see that the transfers have steadily increased, especially for the police, fire and EMS, um, the service kind of fluctuates. 2022, I think, is kind of an outlier because we did have $325,000, I think, we put in there for the Hoak Road widening to, to be able to keep adding to or, or match. So that kind of threw it off. And then debt services for our, our bond obligations that we have and, um, and our OWDA loan that we have for sewer lines. So you can see that, like, they've gone up. Um, and then I also included, it's not really a transfer, but it's, it's the losses from Meadowbrook. So you can see, you know, where they range. Um, but if you take Meadowbrook as a department compared to the others, it's doing better than the other departments. Um, it does have its own revenue source, so it does help, but, um, I did include that there for comparison. Then looking at the costs, the operating expenses, um, this is from our 2024 budget. And if you took all the operating expenses for the police and the fire and service, and we pulled those out, which the operating expenses are our utilities, fuel, um, repair and maintenance for vehicles or, or facilities, training, um, for the personnel, if we pulled all that out, you can see we still, even with the transfers we have, we would still need more transfers. So that means you're going to be cutting staff positions. Even if we cut all our, our operating expenses, we still have a deficit, and we're still going to have to transfer monies, so, um,
What's the first column there?
Uh, the operating expenses.
Well, if the operating expenses were 526,000, why do we have to transfer in 2 million?
Uh, that, I didn't put personnel cost. Personnel is the other. We got operating and personnel, so. That's what I'm saying. If we got rid of all our operating expenses, we still have the personnel cost. And so, of total expenditures, there's still 740,000 transfers, like, in the police department. Yeah. So, that's what we're looking at. That's what we're hitting is, we're a service organization. It's all personnel cost. Is the biggest, biggest chunk of our expenses. Um, so I was trying to show that by even if we got, you know, tried to trim anything from operating, which we do already, um, we're still going to come up short. We're going to be hitting the, the personnel expenses. Um, we still haven't, you know, we're still down at one battalion chief for the fire department. We're down, we're down two police officers now, hopefully getting one back. Uh, we had some health issues with one. I know with, um, the situation we're in, I know we do have, uh, current, current employees and recruits that we're looking at. Um, they are, they are looking at our, our situation. They're paying attention to our fiscal operations and the levy failures. Um, so we're having some, you know, trouble trying to recruit new police and fire and, uh, as well as keeping those. We, I know we just, we had a new, another firefighter leave. We got a new full-time this week or last week, so we're seeing that, that, that cycle go through. Um, so. Talking about, you know, our fiscal, uh, picture, uh, we got next year what I'm projecting, and then 2026, if nothing happens, then we're negative. So, and that's when we're going to have issues and, um, then we'll have to have talks with the state. And they might put us fiscal watch or a fiscal emergency, depending on how bad it is. And then that's when they come in and take over operations. So, um, they're still in need. Um, nothing, you know, we're still, we're still working within the budget that we approved and, and trying to keep expenses down. Um, moving stuff around so we don't have to ask for more. So, um, doing what we can, but we do, that, you know, the, over since 2004, when we instituted the income tax, you know, the, the expenses have, have grown due to inflation and just cost of living at a higher rate than the, the income tax collections have. So I know you've seen this before. This is if we wanted to do a, uh, property tax. So, um, looking at, uh, three and a half mils with our new, I include the new taxable values that we, that the daughters have increased, you know, from the evaluations. So, three and a half mils would, would bring us in about 1.6 million, which would still be short, for the transfers that we're needing and, and the deficits we're seeing. So then if we went to five mils, um, the 2.3 million would cover the police and fire department. We'd still have to take care, excuse me, take care of the debt service and, and street departments. And then going, going up six and a half, um, we'd give them about 3 million. That would cover all of our expenses. So, but six and a half mils, like I said, it is, uh, that's a big property tax levy. And then again, these revenues do not grow as the economy grows. They will be, they will be put in there as a certain amount we can collect. And down the road, eventually they'll, they'll be capped and be, reduction factors being factored in there as well. Just wanted to highlight where we are in, in relation to property taxes with other cities. You know, it's kind of unbelievable that we're, we're kind of up there compared to the other cities. But we're at 13.78, and it may be because we carried over some stuff from township days. Uh, so, I know township, that's a lot of, they do a lot of, because they can't collect income tax, so they have property taxes. So, that could explain why we're higher, but that's, that's where we are in relation to the, the cities, uh, around us. So we come back to, uh, the income tax collection. And again, you know, if we lose the 100% credit, we're losing about a, uh, close to a million dollars, 900,000 or so. So, um, the, the numbers up top, where I have the 1.72, two and a half, 2.25, that's the rate. The 722,000 for the 1.75, that is residential tax we collect. And then down, down below, the 4.3, smaller, would be employer withholding. Um, that would be total. So, um, like we said before, when we went for the two and a half, it was bringing about, um, total withholding and residence, about 7.9, um, which is about, um, it'd be about, about $3,000, a $3 million increase from what we're bringing in now. So, because we're bringing a little over five now. So, um, then comparing where we're at in the income tax rates, um, again, we're, we're towards, towards the bottom. Uh, we are one of two that have the 50% credit. Springfield has a 50% credit as well. Uh, everyone else is at 100%. So, you know, the median, I look like about two, 2.25% for income tax rates. So, staff has met during our staff meetings and had discussions, and came up with a couple of options to, to throw out here for you. The first one is, um, to, they think, you know, people support police and fire if they know it's going to be, we can say it's designated for that, but showing them it's designated. So if we say a half a percent is going to police, then it has to go into police fund. That's what we're required to do. And if we say a half a percent is going to fire fund, it'll go into fire fund. So those will be, they'll be in the designated funds. You have to support those, so that's where it will be. Uh, we can leave, uh, the current situation the same. The, the 1% to the general fund and 0.5 to the capital improvement projects fund. So, it's still, still doesn't do anything for the service department. They don't have any, um, property taxes or any dedicated income tax, uh, coming out. And, and of this option and the next option, it's still with that, uh, returning that 100% credit, which I know, I've talked to Amanda, and I think Martina's looking in, trying to get a, get a, a legal opinion from the attorney general's office stating if that 100% credit is part of the ballot language, that we cannot change it unless we go back to the voters. So they have that reassurance that we're not going to change it again, or if the state comes in and does something, that we can change it. So, uh, we're still working on that. The other option is, uh, of, of getting the, the 100% credit back and then taking the one and a half percent, getting rid of the CIP portion, putting it all in the general fund. That way, there's more flexibility for the city to use it where we need it. Um, but also putting that 0.5% to the police and 0.5 to fire. So it's still designated, the increase is still designated to the police and fire, um, which they are the, the two biggest departments we have that we're transferring money to. So, um, but this, this one kind of gives us the flexibility in using monies. Still letting the residents know that, you know, the police and fire are being funded with this, this increase, and that's what it's going to be used for. Like I said, we, we've talked in staff meeting, um, it affects all of us because we're going to be paying a higher income tax rate. But, you know, we know that's what the city needs, and so, you know, it's, we're, we're willing to pay it. So, um, so it's short and sweet. Like I said, there's, I wish I had better, you know, we had got some more revenues or something came in, but, that's all I have. I just wanted to give you the, the couple of options that, um, staff came up with.
Well, one question I had so far, Kevin, the, regarding the credits and all those other, you know, you have the list of other municipalities. Is that, are all those the same where it, it comes out to, uh, where if you have, like, the, where you work, it basically has to, so like, for instance, like Troy. If you're, if they're, if somewhere that's a lower tax rate, they're, they're given 100% credit if you, if it's at a equal or higher one.
Yeah.
There. So, so it's technically, so if it was lower, like, at 1.5, then Troy is going to say, okay, we're taxing you at a, at a 0.25?
Correct.
Okay, just checking that.
Yeah, we do have employees here that work, so if, if they're working here, they're paying 2.5. Troy is going to give them credit for 100% of the 1.75, so they won't owe anything else but what they paid to Clayton, so.
So I, I have a question on, um, it's, I don't know, I'm kind of on the two options, I guess. You know, just looking at the top numbers here, it looks like, as far as the, um, transfers that we have and also on the property tax money, it looks like the police really are, take the, take the highest percentage of what we, of the largest numbers that we've got.
There's two old levies, I think, from the township days, because they're back in the seventies. And then, um, uh, back in 2008, we did a 3.5 property, uh, tax for the police as well as the fire. And those were renewed a couple of times, and then they were made permanent with the, I think in 16 maybe, or whenever they did it. So, but yeah, the, the police have the larger millage of, of, of the general fund or the, uh, fire and EMS.
So no matter what, you're talking about keeping the, or increasing the credit back to 100% for both options?
Yeah, I think that's, you know, that's what, I think people want it. They just, they don't trust us that we'll change it back to 50%, but yeah.
So why, for the, so since the police is taking more from the general fund and the fire is also taking about 900,000, why couldn't we do 1% to police fund, 1% to fire fund, and then just a half a percent to the general fund?
That's kind of actually where I was kind of going with it also.
Well, I mean, there are a lot of other things that come out of the general fund. I mean, we're funding basically the entire service department from the general fund and then all of the other departments.
Debt service.
And the debt service as well. And then if we get rid of the capital improvement section, we'd also be funding the capital improvements from the general fund.
Yeah, and then i- if we do have that one and a half going to the general fund and the police and fire still need transfers, we have that ability to do that because we have that, that money flowing into the general fund. Like I said, that's the flexibility, so.
So in the police, you can't move it out?
No, if it goes in the police fund or fire, any, any fund besides the general fund, once you put that money in there, you cannot transfer it to another fund unless you go get a court order. Um, and nobody wants to do that. So, um, the general fund's the only one you can transfer out of to another fund to, to help it, so.
I thought that was probably the answer.
Uh, any of the debt we have, is that related to police and fire?
Um, no, it's all, it was, uh, we got a Main Street improvement when we did it. A portion of Main Street, uh, some of it's from the Commerce Park. Um, like I said, another one's the ODD, Ohio Water Development Authority, uh, sewer, sewer lines that were put in. We took a loan out for that. And, and, uh, then we had some, uh, some, uh, roadwork. When Caterpillar went on Hoak and Kemble, we paid for some of that. So that, that's majority, it's kind of roadwork, I guess. And somehow, when you look at it, it all matures in 2030. So if we can get to 2030, then we're going to have no debt payments then, if we can stay that way. So, so that'd be kind of a windfall, but we got to get there first.
I, I would have to say, I think the one thing that some citizens will say that will hurt us is just the continued, well, if it goes to the general fund, how much of it will go to Meadowbrook? What's the plan for that? How much are we going to continue to supplement Meadowbrook? Us having, us as a council, has, we haven't had a workshop on it recently. I just think it's a subject that we can't not have answers for because the residents need to know that. And I know the mayor has said before, and I obviously would agree with some parts of, you can't cut your way out of prosperity. But at the same time, the citizens are obviously hurting with inflation. I mean, you go to the grocery store and it's crazy expensive. I feel like they will say, you have to start cutting something, like, we've had to cut, and Meadowbrook is what we've been saying you should cut.
If you, if you look at the transfers, even if we cut Meadowbrook, it's not going to, it, I mean, it's 180,000 is what we lost last year. That's what costs the general fund, um, because they, they do bring in the green fees and rental fees and stuff, so. I mean, yeah, you comply towards the service, so then it's only $200,000 for service, but still each department will need transfers. Yeah, I mean, we, like I said, when we first took Meadowbrook on, I ran it as an enterprise fund, trying, did it for three years. And enterprise fund is basically, it's supposed to be self-sustaining. It's supposed to be like a business operation. And, and that did not happen. Um, same way, like, down Dayton, the convention center, it was ran as enterprise fund until it couldn't run anymore. So it's in part of the Dayton's general fund, and that's where we moved it to, to cover the, cover the costs.
You know, it's also, I, I kind of have been thinking about this because, again, the Meadowbrook is a hot topic. But, you know, I was thinking, like, in the case of Northmont Schools, let's say, for instance, you know, they, they've, they have, they're facing kind of the same situation that we're in. Well, well, no one says, sell the football stadium. I mean, no one says that because it's part of the school system. And I, I feel like Meadowbrook has become part of the, part of our city, and it is a revenue source. I get, I see the numbers. I mean, I'm not, you know, I'd love to see it, you know, flat, but, you know, the football stadium's not flat. You know, it sits vacant, you know, most of the year. And, um, I think, you know, I think when we start dissecting pieces like that out, um, yet, could we sell it? Maybe. You know, would it, would it be developed or would it be used as a golf course? Who knows? You know, it, it's not in Northmont Schools, so that's not going to benefit us. And, you know, w- once, once we do sell it, just like we've been, we've talked about, like, having control over some of these areas, this real estate at, up at the villages and on Main Street. You know, then we lose control of that. And, um, again, I, I say that as, you know, I, I golf once a year. I'm not a golf nut, you know, uh, over this, but I think it's, I think we have a lot to lose if we go down that road. I'd like to see it in the black versus in the red, but, you know, that's really been, that's a whole other.
I know, I know this year, we do, we do have a beverage cart, so I'm hoping that brings in some more revenue. Because I tell you, when I go, I'm at church league golf ceremony night, and there'd be other leagues before us. And, you know, they'd be sitting on the backs of their cars, you know, and they'd have their own coolers, so. Trying to get, you know, since we have the liquor license now, we can make money that way. My church league started out at Large Tree, and that closed. Uh, we went to Pantera, that closed, so I don't know if the third time's a jinx too. So I'll take care of your problems for you, but, um, so, yeah.
Sorry, Kevin, I have a question. So, even if we were to cut staffing from Meadowbrook, for example, aren't we already short-staffed in a lot of areas with Meadowbrook?
There was, yeah, there's, we had a full-time, uh, person that retired last year, and we did not replace him. So, we have the superintendent, the golf pro, uh, and a one, uh, assistant to the superintendent. Those are the full-time people. And then we have, uh, Amanda, our banquet coordinator, she's full-time. So, everyone else is, is part-time. Um, and it's, I think Elaine would tell you, it's fun trying to find part-time help, so.
And we haven't even given the open catering a, uh,
Yeah, last year was the first.
That was the first year. So we haven't really given it a full run on that portion because I think that's drawn in so much more business as a whole. But we haven't really given it enough time. A lot of people still don't know that. And maybe to marketing a little heavier on the banquet side and event side, just to let people know that.
And the downside is, I mean, it is a golf course in Ohio. I mean, we have bad weather in the winter, and that's, during the summer months, we, we, we do break even, but then we get to the down, down times and, um, then that's when we take the hit. So, um, simulators do help a little bit. Um, they get more, more utilized in the evenings, not during the day too much. People are working. But, uh, yeah, if there's other opportunities to increase rentals or activities down there or something, we can, uh, do. I mean, that's, yeah, anything's going to help.
Kevin, we, we've made a lot of changes at Meadowbrook in the last two years. We took it away from the company that was running it.
Yeah.
And brought it in-house.
Yeah.
And also, thank the good Lord, COVID is behind us. Three years, you, you had no parties, you had no weddings, or, or very few during the COVID.
Yeah, in 19, we, we had the tornadoes that closed down for a couple of weeks.
And this year, I believe, Elaine, we have more than we've had in the past few years, haven't we? It's including golf outings also. I think 31 was the number of golf outings that I heard. And, and I, weddings and parties and that go on all the time. But, uh, I, I think since we've brought it back in-house, and I can't remember the name of the company, the fellow's name was Adrian. I remember that. He was a nice enough guy, but I don't know, and, and we, they can bring in their own caterer now, which, which is a plus to, uh, to renting the building instead of using the catering company that was running it.
I go down there and I see Northmont catering's being used quite a bit down there, so it's helping Northmont with their catering because they do have good food and good catering. So we've been seeing a lot of that being utilized as well.
And Rob's?
Yeah.
They're an excellent caterer, too.
So, I was, I'm going to throw out this scenario here, um, you know, again, because, you know, a couple of months ago, you know, I don't, I don't know what, what it's been updated, but still that 133 votes, you know, still sticks with me. November's a presidential election. There, the honest truth is, there's nothing that we can do to really change turnout. That, that's just the reality when it comes down to a presidential election. It's going to be the highest it, it is every four years. I wouldn't necessarily be opposed, you know, if it, if it would be a potential good idea, putting the two and a half, you know, or the, well, the 1% increase, basically mimicking what we've done the last two. Who, and again, in November, who knows? It, it just, and, but really blast out there, you know, like we did even more, you know, in, in the spring. A lot of people I talked to who were on the fence last year, or, you know, uh, some still voted for, but then some didn't. I think we did a much better job, you know, of explaining things, uh, this time by far.
It's just, getting the word out is, is, I mean, there's so many avenues, but people still don't.
I mean, even, and look, there's some, there, there's some people you're just not going to convince. No, no election goes 100%. Unless it's, you know, you're third world countries there. But, um, yeah, we have democracy in North Korea. But, in that scenario, let's say it fails in November. Next spring, off-year election, now, we, we don't know what's going to be on, you know, as far as any, anything big, as far as like the state or anything like that. Are we, and, and doing that again, doing the same thing again? Are we, is that really kind of pushing it to the edge or even past, you know, to where we're getting into a dangerous level here? Because I think, you know, like, for example, and I know the chamber wasn't able to upload the recording, like, what you did at Meadowbrook, that's, you know, was phenomenal. And I was looking forward the next day, and it's like, oh, there, you know, we weren't able to blast that out. I mean, we don't need that produced, you know, do it right here. You know, and, and put, didn't, do it in segments and, you know, blast out of, okay, here's, people have questions about, you know, this, this aspect or this aspect, um, here. You know, and look on, I mean, we see what the, the questions were from people, so. I, I think that's my concern in this asking you guys here. So basically, at that point, if, if that scenario happened, it fails in November, and then it goes to, you know, n- next year in the spring. I mean, then at that point, then we've seen if it fails then, and it's like, look, the, we're not going to pass this. This is just, the majority of, of the residents aren't going to go for this right now. I mean, is that then pushing it to, like, are, are we down to kind of the, the wire of, like, if, to put something there in the fall?
Due to the income tax cycle, like I said, we won't start a new rate until 1-1 of it, of a year. So if we go in November and it passes, then 1-1, the new rate takes effect. If it doesn't, then you're looking at trying to get something done in '25. It's not going to happen till 1-1 of '26. So you're pushing the cash flow further out, and hopefully, you know, something does happen and, and it does alleviate the projected deficit. But, um, just the, the nature of, of an income tax, um, because there's no way you're going to institute it and do a, a rate half a year and a new rate. Because it's, I mean, taxes trying to fill out forms are hard enough, so.
If we do put it on in November, is there any way that we could have a question and, um, an answer session with residents that still don't get the verbiage? I know Christie had talked to people, and she said she was talking to the fact that people still didn't understand it, and if we could have some sort of question and answer somewhere here, other places.
We brought that up in our staff meeting, if, if we change the current, you know, 1% to general fund, a half percent to CIP, if we all moved it. We're like, what is the, you know, the department taxation going to change that? What, what would that ballot language look like? Because we don't have control of it, so. And that came up in discussions because it, it is confusing the way it's ordered.
But both of the, I mean, but both these scenarios you've put, it would basically be on the ballot of a half percent increase with 100% credit. Am I correct in seeing that?
Yeah, for each, for the, for the two departments, yeah.
But on, on the, on the income tax and 100% credit?
Yes.
There's a newsletter coming out before the fall election.
There will be one.
Why don't you utilize the newsletter as a means of announcing meetings to get information out to the public so they know where to come to? Since it's supposed to be distributed to everybody's house.
Right.
You should get something rather than have to rely on social media or something else.
I, I agree 100%. We did that when we put, put it on last November, and we still had several people who had no idea that the newsletter even existed, but we can absolutely do that.
Put it in, put it in print, then we can announce it here at these meetings every time we have a meeting. Essentially, we're going to have a meeting session to present this as far as what it means. And then have each of us informed as far as what this means, so we can be first in terms of how to present it without stepping on, over our feet and representing the city.
It's all on the delivery of the language, and I think that that was in the past, um, our issue, that it just wasn't delivered right in the language.
Well, I think there's a general distrust in terms of what government does anymore. And I think the distrust in terms of the, the tax credit reduction that was done before, because of that, there, you know, is still hard for people.
Yeah, so like I said, hopefully we can get an opinion from the AG's office, and that would answer some questions for residents and calm their nerves about a change happening.
I, I think another thing that we have to think about having it next spring is the fact that everybody to my left here will be running for election next spring, too. And there may be even a primary at that point in time, which, uh, could, could create
Yeah.
some other things to be, for them to be thinking about except for the income tax levy.
Well, we wouldn't, well, any of the- Well, we wouldn't, well, any of the at-large and the mayor elections won't be until November of twenty-five. So in the spring, there, and we're, and we don't have primaries, so.
Well, there'll be an election in the spring, though. There'll be primaries somewhere, may not be here in Clayton, but there will be primaries.
And I would encourage council, as much as I love you all, and I would love to see you all stay here, it's my job to make sure this city is financially secure. And whether council members are up for election or not, it doesn't matter. I have to present what's best.
That's why I think November is a better time than next spring, is what I'm saying.
Well, Tim, just answer your question. There, if there's primaries or nothing in the city, in the Northmont area, next year being twenty-five, it's an off-year. There wouldn't be anything even, you know, statewide election or anything.
Have you talked to Northmont to see if they'd go on in the spring?
I know they haven't made a decision as far as the fall. I assume they're going to go on in the fall from the meetings I've sat in on.
Fall of twenty-five?
No, this fall, so. So, but I'm waiting to see, since you have the increased values, that whatever property tax they're going for should be lower millage, since they can collect more with the higher values now with the lower millage, so. But that hasn't been determined yet. So those, like I said, just want to give you some information, and we'll come back to you. Let's get your guidance and see what we need to do.
Well, I think, you know, from what everyone has said, and it's my thoughts strongly, too, is, you know, we really need to get out in front of the marketing piece of this. We need to make sure everyone understands how it affects them, you know, not only, not only the wide community, but the individuals. Everyone that I've talked to, I've talked to, you know, one or two people that lived in Clayton that were, you know, that were happy that it failed before because of their, you know, not because of the city, but because of their own situation. But everyone else that I've talked to has kind of said the same kind of things, well, I didn't know it was this, I didn't know it was that. And I'm like, huh, you know, I don't know what we need to do to get that correct message out to people, so that they make an informed decision.
And I agree with you. I mean, but what I need from council now is, what am I marketing? So what are we doing? Which of the options, do you want to place what we've placed on the ballot before? Do you want to try that again? Do we want to do option one or two that's been presented here this evening? I would like to bring legislation in June at our June meeting for you to consider.
Which of these is the most flexible?
I think option two is.
Yeah.
Because it's one and a half percent in general fund.
So when we did our walks, okay, we, the departments went out and walked. We went about fifteen hundred different homes that we passed out flyers to, to get feedback and to give them information. One of the things that you guys already discussed, and the shocking thing, was, did you get a mailer from the city reference this income tax? They're like, did it come from the city? Yes. I usually don't read those things, okay? That was a resounding, repeated answer, do you get the newsletters? Yeah, but we don't really read all of it. There's pictures on there. I mean, so getting out the message was, is difficult. The other part of that was, our feedback was, police and fire, police and fire, police and fire. We will support police and fire, we will support police and fire. We don't know about the city as a whole, but if it comes out as police and fire, police and fire, we are in more support of that. And I think that's why you see staff putting together something that says, police and fire. It's not that we can't support the service, we can't do those things, but police and fire is the, is what they're concerned about. And some of the things that will change. From the fire department standpoint, we held a department meeting once this didn't pass and had some discussions with our staff. Obviously, we need to let them know what's coming down the pipe, what, how, what does this look like? And as far as whether we put it on November or December or next year, you know, we've got staff that is very concerned. You have staff that is watching these council meetings, you have staff that's looking at these very heavily. It's not something we've ever seen before, they're paying attention to how local government's being ran. And because they're concerned. We've already lost some individuals, but we do have these people on board, you know, for the rest of the year. Just let us try to get this resolved, you know, and give us some time. If we don't put this on November and we push it off to next year, you're going to see a mass exodus in our departments. And I don't know that you're ever going to get those people back. Once they leave and they're somewhere where they're comfortable or they're secure, even if we pass something a year from now, you're not going to attract those same people back. If they do leave, how do we recruit people in an environment where we're struggling financially and we cannot pass levies or anything? So for us to put this off another year from the fire department standpoint, not trying to tell anybody what to do, but from a fire department standpoint, I have grave concerns if we did make a decision not to put this on the ballot in November. It's almost to the point you will not have a department to come back to, whether it passes or not. So that's from my standpoint.
I don't think I've heard any of us say that. I mean, I don't want to speak for everyone else.
Yeah, so we just want to make sure we put that out there. That is a great concern. And whether you talk about income tax or you talk about property tax, talk to our elderly who we take in on medic calls all the time, okay? Property tax is something that, and I call it the unforgiving tax. No matter what happens in your situation, no matter what happens in your life, if your tax bill's a thousand dollars, you get to pay a thousand dollars. Does not matter. Income tax, if you lose your job, you have no income, you aren't paying anything. Retirees, we're not taxing retirees, but if you increase it on the property tax, it does not matter if you're a retiree or not. We're going to increase the taxes on you. That's the other feedback that we got from the elderly, you know, that they were concerned about if we put levies on, how do we pay this? Because we don't, our money is not increasing as much as these levies are. So that's just, from the fire department standpoint, and the feedback we got from walking through the houses and the neighborhoods, just to put that out there.
Brian, you're right.
Thank you, sir.
You're right. I mean, I, you know, on all the years I've been sitting here, and the past year budgets that have been proposed and talked about, the one thing that was always noted in those budget lines was that the gradual decreasing value that was remaining in the general fund each year progressively to current day. And I remember asking Rick in the past, what's going to happen? It's like, well, we're going to take care of that later. So we've honestly kicked the can down the road away.
That's exactly what we, yes.
But we have, and unfortunately, the COVID time hit, so we weren't going to do anything during that time period. But we're at the point right now that, you know, if we do this, delay this one more year, then we're not very responsible essentially for operation of the city. And we have no business being here. You know, we, we're counting on the employees essentially to maintain service operations for the city. If the staff can't count on us to do the right thing, you know, they're going to leave. And when I worked at Wright State, it's the same thing. If the staff couldn't count on the administration of the university to take care of them, they left. I watched a lot of people voluntarily leave versus, you know, wait for the X to come. And others just waited out as long as they could in order to get retirement. That was me. But, you know, we can't delay this anymore. I mean, I don't, you know, what Northmont Schools wants to do, that's Northmont Schools. We have to function and focus on what the city of Clayton needs as far as sustaining operations. Or I provided the city manager with a copy of a document that was produced twenty-eight years ago, when the merger was being proposed. And I asked her to look at that and essentially say, how much of that is coming to fruition now in one fashion or another twenty-eight years later? Not exactly in the fashion that was originally drafted, but how much of it's coming true? And some of it is. And it's going to be painful in terms of what do we do? And some of the outcomes may not be exactly what we want, because it's going to cost us all. And potential end result was, we're going to lose our identity as far as the city. And because the state will take us over. And that's the bottom line, because if you have no resources, somebody else has to do it, and it won't be us. So, you know, we have to push this, promote it, you know, ensure the citizens of the city that we're in this, as far as doing what's best for them and being mindful with the resources that we collect. And, you know, I, I pay my dad's property tax bill, you know? His property tax went up six hundred dollars this year. My dad's ninety-five years of age. What the hell? I mean, when does he get a break? I mean, to ask him to pay more property tax for other municipal services, I'd get hard-pressed to do that. You know, no, my dad won't be around for another five years, but still, six hundred bucks on his property tax, that's just us. That's just our house. Get on others' website.
We hear that with our elderly clientele, I mean, I'll be honest with you.
Get on the, I'm going to say, get on the others' website, see how much other people pay for their property tax around the county, around the city. I mean, it's, you know, it's shocking from the standpoint of that end of things. So to put a property tax on the issue, on the ballot to solve our issue.
The other thing like that, when Kevin said that we passed a levy for the police and fire in two thousand eight, remember what happened shortly after that? The housing market crashed, and basically, everything that we gained from those levies, we've lost, and we never got back. Yes, so we were supposed to gain another five to six hundred thousand dollars. We lost almost all of that because of the housing market. So if we do put a levy on, say the housing market crashes again, we lose all that money once again. So we, and that's why, the levy, I don't think is the right approach for us long-term. We made them permanent, that was the big step. But again, we can't increase them, and that's, and as you can see, when you look at the operating budgets, you know, from seventeen on, our costs don't go down, you know? And I'll be honest with you, you look at departments, and we're spending less than a half million dollars per department on operating costs for a year? That's actually pretty good. You know, it's staffing. I mean, that's, we're a service-oriented organizations that we don't, we don't make widgets, and we can't sell more widgets, and we can't increase the price of a widget. Nor do we. We provide services, but we don't want to charge more, just like for the medic bill. And we don't want to keep charging more just to get money from people in their time of need. That's not what we're looking to do. So, you know, like I said, I just want to make sure that, expressed from the fire department standpoint, they're concerned in what I think would happen to the department. If we don't step up and do something here this year, we're going to lose the confidence of those individuals. And I don't blame them for security reasons, they will start looking.
I mean, our problem is the fact we're a city of houses, not a city of diversified tax base. You know, how many businesses do we have versus compared to, you know, the city of Inglewood or the city of Trotwood? You know, Inglewood basically said that they had twenty-eight million sitting in their, in their cash reserves through operations. Okay, we don't have anything, you know, we're going to have a tenth of that, you know?
We're a bedroom community, we always will be.
We're a bedroom community. I mean, Huber Heights was a bedroom community one time. I'm not wanting to become Huber Heights, but I mean, Huber Heights was a bedroom community, too. Yeah, you know, we don't need Buc-Ee's.
Amanda, when do we have to have it to the Board of Elections if we want it on November ballot?
Early August.
Early August? Okay, so we have to, with only one meeting a month, then we have to do something next month, then, okay.
Said you wanted it by June?
That would be my preference if we had something by June, so we can get it certified to the ballot, so we can start marketing.
And have it by June unless we do it tonight.
Having a decision by June. So if council can tell me which of these options, or if there's a different option that you want to do, so we can bring legislation to the June twentieth meeting to have it voted on by council.
Deciding if we want it in November, aren't we? We don't need to decide which option we're putting on there, do we?
Yes, we do.
We do.
We do.
Okay.
Is anyone against putting it on in November?
I think we need to put it on in November. We cannot wait.
I don't know, I don't think it was ever, I never recall hearing anybody say, delay.
Okay, so we're putting it on in November, and I would, I would still go for the most flexible option. Anybody have any different thoughts?
Well, I think if we call it a police and fire levy, that the majority of the funds we're collecting should go to police and fire. So I'm sort of one percent and one percent and a half percent. I know that takes away from our flexibility, but I, I would put my money on it will pass, because people value police and fire.
I agree, we would have a very well-funded police and fire department and no other services, so.
Could we change the proportion a little bit, then? I mean, I, I mean, Kevin, could you run some numbers to show us that?
Point five to the service department?
I'm sorry?
Could we do one to the general fund, point five to the service, point five to the police, point five to the fire?
I mean, we could, yes.
And then could we still call it a police and fire levy?
I mean, I think, yeah, police, yeah, fire, public service levy is what it would be at that point.
So I would be in favor of that, because I feel like the messaging would be way more favorable for Amanda to get that out there. If we labeled it a public safety, public safety levy. We, again, you know, we nearly passed one that was promoted as, you know, protect essential services. So I think, I think putting the services in.
If it's like that in the ballot language, and then those monies go directly to those funds, it cannot be used for anything else.
They cannot be transferred out, they would be in the department.
They have to be used for those operations, so.
Well, the current income tax structure, the way it was voted in before, half percent essentially was going to pay for roads.
Roads, yes.
So right now, one percent goes to general fund?
Yes, yes, one percent goes to general fund and a half percent goes to the capital improvement fund.
We can't, that would not change with a new income tax ballot issue.
It would, it would, yeah, it could change. I mean, and the language that we're proposing, if you even look at option two, where you have a half percent to police, a half percent to fire, and one point five to the general fund, that eliminates the point five percent that goes into capital. It does, it supersedes everything we've done before.
So could we, I mean, what does everyone think on an option three of one percent to the general fund, point five to police, point five to fire, point five to service?
Yeah, so what I'll tell you is, you know, if we put that point five just into the service department, capital improvements for roads are coming out of the service department budget at that point. It's no longer coming out of the general fund. Or would be very limited coming out of the general fund. If it is as it is, the one point five to the general fund, point five to police, point five to fire, then I have the flexibility, we can staff the service department adequately, and then provide whatever road work we need to have done based on what we have available in the general fund.
Because the general fund, you can transfer back and forth.
I can move the general, yes, I can move that to wherever.
Yes.
My recommendation would be option two.
Kenny, no, you're fine. Tim?
We can still somehow use the wording, I don't know if Martina has the okay, as a public safety. I don't know.
Just like last time, I send the language to the Board of Elections, the Board of Elections sends it to the state. We have to use whatever language they come back with, yeah.
So, yeah, yeah.
It will say in the ballot language, if we're putting it into the police fund and fire fund, it will say that in the ballot, which it will go in there, so.
And I mean, if you look at it, the increase that we would be requesting is going to police and fire. I mean, because the one point five is what we collect now, any increase is going police and fire.
So option two?
So there's a consensus, and we don't vote in.
Consensus on that, Tim, you good?
Work session, but a consensus, okay.
Yeah, and, yeah, I have no problem with option two. I mean, when the budget comes forward in the fall, I mean, this will all be seen in the breakout lines for the individual budget lines as far as where money goes. So if there's any question about where the funding lines actually lie in terms of how much went where, we can address it at that point as far as how to essentially remix things within the percentages that are present, as well as answer any questions in terms of what might be questionable.
Yes.
Okay, so we're going in November?
We're going in November, and I will bring legislation in June for option two.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Kevin, while he's up here? Okay, is there a motion to, thank you, Kevin?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to conclude the workshop by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?